Hello, everyone. I call this April 14th, 2020, Virtual Meeting of the Burnleyo County Commissioners to Order. As with all of our meetings, we will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by our county attorney, Mr. Ken Martinez.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the United States of America and to the Republic which we and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martinez. We appreciate that. I would also ask for, if there are any additions or changes to the agenda, County Manager Julie Morgas Baca.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, there are no additions or changes to the agenda.
Thank you very much. Number four, Public Comment and Communications, Ms. Julianne Baca.
I have received one written comment submitted to the Board of County Commissioners from Don Schrader. This, his public comments, will be incorporated into the minutes for this meeting.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Mr. Schrader will be noted. On to number five, Approvals. Number one that we have is number A, which is Burnleyo County BCC Meeting Protocol. So, we did receive guidance. Thank you to County Attorney Martinez, as well as the Attorney General for the State, as well as our President, as well as Governor Lujan Grisham regarding open meetings and Zoom meetings. We will follow all of those protocols during this Zoom meeting. In the event that we miss anything, Julianne Baca and County Attorney Martinez will make sure we get back on track. But as with all of our meetings, the intent always is for openness and transparency. Nothing we will do tonight will be anything other than that, except for the fact that we may indeed miss something, but we'll be open and honest about it and correct it immediately. So, I thank you all for your attention to this and for this meeting protocol. I would like to now, because of this, ask our county clerk to do a roll call for our commissioners, so we all can say, yes, we approve this meeting protocol.
Mr. Chairman, County Clerk Linda Stover. Commissioner Colley? Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Yes.
Chairman Talbert?
Yes.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The motion has been approved for the Board of County Commissioners to follow the BCC and state and federal meeting protocols for tonight. Thank you all very much. County Manager, concurrence of the Burnleyo County Metropolitan Detention Center Jail Administrative Chief. We would like to take a motion to provide concurrence for the appointment of the Burnleyo County Metropolitan Detention Center Chief. I will give you a few minutes, County Manager, if you'd like to just brief us real quick. You're on mute.
Sure thing, Commissioner. So, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, good evening. So, as you all know, Chief Hernandez is retiring on May the 9th, and of course, we wish him well, as he enters his new chapter. So, at this time, I would like to bring Deputy Chief Greg Richardson to you for concurrence. So, basically, what we're looking for at the MDC, as you know, is continuity, leadership, experience, above all, to the respective staff and others, responsiveness to myself and the county commission. Those are the traits that we're looking for, and those are the traits that Deputy Chief Richardson possesses. And as you all know, you know, we are enduring these tough times during the COVID-19 crisis. And I will tell you, his leadership skills and experience has been put to the test. He is extremely responsive. He has the support of the staff of the MDC. It is very, very evident. And I just feel like this is a time where I want to continue what Chief Reese, then Chief Hernandez, and I truly believe that Chief Richardson will be carrying on the success of the MDC, especially working with the McLendon, right, Ken? So, we really need that continuity, and I really feel that Chief Richardson, or Deputy Chief Richardson, would be the person for this job. And so, I respectfully am coming to you all for concurrence. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Julie, very much. At this time, please.
I was just going to move that we approved the County Manager's recommendation.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner Colley. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Piscotti? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Julie, for that update. And I would ask now for Madam Clerk to do the roll, please.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. Commissioner Colley?
Commissioner Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It passes unanimously again, twice in one time. I love it. Thank you all very much. Next, item number six, Approval of the Consent Agenda. I move to
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner O'Malley?
I would just, for discussion purposes, would like to pull off 6C.
See that here. Okay. Commissioner O'Malley is asking to pull off the Consent Agenda, item number 6C. Is there any opposition to that?
I think we can just do that without a vote. Yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
That item will become 8C.
Eight. I'm sorry, Julianne.
8C, as in Charlie.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. Okay. So, other than that, if there are no other, I moved, we approved the Consent Agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, looks like from Commissioner O'Malley and Commissioner Casada. Great. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please provide resolution and ordinance numbers for items 6A. Hold on, I'm looking down. 6K? All right, if I'm getting all these right. 6P? 6Q? 6R? These are all, wow, these are all consent. Great. 6S? T? U? And there are combinations of ordinances, ARs, and FRs. So, I hopefully got all that right, and I'll leave it now in your good hands, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. 6A will be AR 2020-32. 6K will be FR 2020-33. 6L will be AR 2020-34. 6P will be AR 2020-36. Q? 6Q will be Ordinance 2020-10.
Madam Clerk, if I could just stop you real quick for 6P, should that be AR 2020-5?
Oh, it is. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good for you, Julie. Okay. P is AR 2020-35. Okay. Q is Ordinance 2020-10. R is Ordinance 2020-11. S is Ordinance 2020-12. T is Ordinance 2020-13. U is AR 2020-36.
Wow. Excellent. Thank you so much. So, we will get an FR number when we get to item 8C, which is what we pulled off. Okay. Excellent. On to number seven, Adoption of Ordinance Amendment to County Code. First is Fire and Rescue 2015 International Fire Code and Amendments. Madam Clerk, please issue an ordinance number.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. Ordinance 2020-14.
Thank you so much. Julianne, a public hearing will be conducted. Did we receive anything for the meeting record?
There was no public comment received for this item.
Excellent. Okay. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Perez to walk us through real quickly this particular ordinance. You're on mute.
So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, this basically repeals our 2012 International Fire Code with the 2015. We made a good effort in this particular rendition of the code to really be as business-friendly as we possibly could be, and that's due in large part to the growth of the department. And credit to the Public Safety Tax that was passed, because that alone has helped us to ensure that we have good, solid apparatus to respond to calls with at any given time. So, that allowed us to lower some of those restrictions that we had had in place historically, which were causing some businesses, not all, but some, to kind of reconsider whether they were going to set up shop in Burnleyo County or not. So, I stand for any questions, but this is really a very straightforward amendment and new code adoption, and it's staying in line with the state of New Mexico, and it has gone through the legal review process over the last four or five months.
Thank you, Chief. I did want to make one comment. I received a few calls from businesses in the county when they saw that this was coming up for renewal, and were very positive about the way you and your team interacted with them to make sure it was business-friendly, allowed them to make sure they were protective of their businesses from a fire code perspective, but also allowed them to run their businesses in a way that was not cost prohibitive. So, thank you very much for being willing to look at this and do it the right way. So, thank you very much, Chief.
Mr. Chair.
Yes. Commissioner Casada.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I also would like to thank Chief. I did also have had a lot of, you know, issues in my district on, not only businesses have been there a while as they expand, but, you know, new businesses coming in, and that we appreciate it, that it, you know, it's doing what the state is doing and what the city's doing, because, you know, as Burnleyo County grows, everybody knows that, you know, most of the growth happening now will be happening in Burnleyo County, which is good for us, and that's the growth of the state is happening in Burnleyo County. So, we really thank, I'd like to thank the Chief for his work, for being diligent and being, you know, business-friendly and proactive, because, you know, because of this crisis, when we ever do get out of this, you know, jobs, for sure, are going to be everybody's number-one priority to get people back to work, to get our economy back going, and it's initiatives like this, and making sure that we are up to date and being progressive with what's happening in, you know, in fire and rescue, and all the protocols that come along with that with businesses. So, I'd also like to thank you, Chief. Appreciate you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Casada, thank you very much, and all credit goes to my Fire Marshal Keith Clark, who went through and spent the time reviewing this entire document and doing some rewrites to it, as well as the legal department for their review of that. It's taken some time, so there's a lot of time and effort that went into it, so credit to all of those who were involved, but thank you for the positive comments.
And thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioner Casada. I want to say something else that Commissioner Casada touched on, which is something we all have to be very cognizant of, is, I don't know if you saw, but the unemployment numbers alone for New Mexico jumped from what was, I think, under 5% less than, say, six weeks ago, to now close to 17%. And that's not even fully recognized yet. So, to the extent that when we do come out of this, us being prepared, and I know I saw some things, I think from Mei Ling and her team, and all of us being aware, to get it jump-started as fast as we can is going to be critical. It really is. And the word "jobs," you know, these service industries have been decimated. I mean, Disney, Disney World today furloughed 45,000 people nationally. Obviously, Disney World was not in Burnleyo County. However, think of all the small businesses that have stopped in this last six-week, eight-week period. So, thank you very much for that, for that commentary.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, switching hats, from the EOC Emergency Operations side, Richard Clark has already started a recovery process for us, and we are starting to reach out to others in the community, to the state, and at the federal level, starting to prepare for that exact opportunity to get us back into our normal sense of business, and how do we recover from that, from the unemployment side, working with a lot of the other economic development folks, not just our own internalists. So, we've got actually now a dedicated resource that will work together with Mei Ling and her team to get us prepared for that opportunity when we come out of this.
And thank you. And I saw that press release as well, and I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, if you're on, I apologize for missing that. Chief Perez, thank you for bringing that to our attention. It just shows the amount of people we have at Burnleyo County thinking ahead as to what will happen next, and that's critical. So, thank you. So, with that, I'd like to motion to adopt ordinance 2020-14. May I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Casada, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. Commissioner Colley?
Commissioner Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, very much. Okay.
Commissioner Talbert, if, just for a point of record, if we could have the roll call vote for Consent Agenda, I think we did a vote for that.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, I thought we did that. My bad. Madam Clerk, for the roll call Consent Agenda, please call the roll for Consent.
Yes, Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. Commissioner Colley?
Commissioner Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So called.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Julianne. Item number eight. We're flying through this. Adoption of Resolution. Madam Clerk, can we please have resolution numbers for item 8A, items 1, 2, 3, and 4?
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. Number 8A, item number one is FR 2020-37. Number two is FR 2020-38. Number three is FR 2020-39. Number four is AR 2020-40.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, now, we will turn it over to Deputy County Manager Reagan to discuss budget FY '21 and '22, biennial budget approval. You're on mute. Still on mute.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we got you.
All righty. Deputy, Shirley Reagan, Deputy County Manager of Finance. I'm here to present the fiscal year '21-'22 biennial budget for your approval. The fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 biennial budget was developed, as developed, is attempting to meet the objectives of the county's strategic plan and ensure that the county maintains its recently affirmed AAA bond rating. Preparation for the fiscal year '21-'22 biennial budget began in November 2019 by the Budget Office. Departments were provided with their fiscal year '20-'20 base budgets, including any fiscal year '20 Board of County Commissioners-approved adjustments as a starting point for developing the '21 budgets. The Burnleyo County Biennial Budget is presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval as required by the State Department of Finance and Administration Local Government Division. The budgets are required to be submitted by June 1st of each year per state statute. The budget represents a balanced and comprehensive view of county funding requirements for the next biennial beginning July 1, 2020, including maintaining the DFA 3/12 reserve requirement of $84.5 million and the revenue stabilization reserve of 5% or $16.4 million. However, given, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, revenue and expense contingencies have been incorporated into the FY '21-'22 biennial budget. These include delaying the implementation of various initiatives and related expenses or total removal from the budget. Additionally, all revenues will focus on, with focus on gross receipts tax revenue, will be closely monitored and projections adjusted accordingly. Final adjustments will presented to the, for approval to the Board of County Commissioners in August or September of this year. With that, the first motion is to approve the establishment of the General Fund Biennial Budget of $341,754,213 million for fiscal '21, and $345,925,641 for the planned budget for FY '22. The next, if, Mr. Chair, if it's okay, do you want me just to read all of the motions and then I'll stand for any questions, or?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Are we good with that, Ken?
Okay, I'll continue. So, motion two is to approve the Budget Resolution Number Two, establishing the Burnleyo County Non-General Fund Biennial Budget of $208,710,216 for FY '21, and $185,461,837 for the planned budget of fiscal '22. Also, the third motion is to approve the Financial Resolution establishing the County of Burnleyo Carryover Budget for multi-year projects of $159,580,504 for fiscal year '21. The fourth motion is to approve Administrative Resolution to support the grants and projects listed in Attachment C funded by various sources in FY '21 and FY '22 for the receipt of federal and state funding. Motion five, or Action Five, is approve converting 20 term positions detailed in Attachment D to permanent status. Six is to approve 34 new full-time regular positions detailed in Attachment E. Motion seven is authorize the County Manager or designee pursuant to Administrative Resolution 2018-49 to execute all agency contracts and cooperative agreements on behalf of the BCC as detailed in the contract listing, which is Attachment F and F1, and to authorize the County Manager or designee to amend contract prices in accordance with the limits stipulated in Administrative Resolution 2018-49. The last motion is to authorize the County Manager or designee pursuant to Administrative Resolution 2018-49 to seek reimbursement to the General Fund for any project or initiative funded by the General Fund that subsequently receives funding in whole or in part from an alternative funding source, such as another agency, bond proceeds, or grants. If the amount exceeds County Manager authority, the item will be presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval. I stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions related to budget FY '21 and FY '22? Okay, hearing no questions, we'll move forward. Mr. Martinez, are we good with approving as a group, or would you like us to approve each, each motion on each number?
Mr. Chair, I think you've described each motion, and I think it's only because it's clear to all members voting that you're voting on all of them, unless anyone would like to divide the question, if there's a different thought with regard to one question as opposed to the next. But if there's no request to divide the question, I think you could vote on all three at a time. I'll look at it at a time.
Okay. Does anyone have an objection? Okay. Well, then, I would make the motion to approve FY '21 and '22, items number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, as presented by Deputy County Manager Reagan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Piscotti. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. Commissioner Colley?
Colley, yes.
Commissioner Casada?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Commissioner Piscotti?
Aye.
Chairman Talbert?
Aye.
So called.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, members of the Commission. Okay, we're now on item 8B, Real Estate Acquisition of Properties Located at 517 and 521 Cardenas Drive Southeast. And we will need an FR number. Madam Clerk, for item number B4?
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover, County Clerk. B4 will be FR 2020-41.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, there was a motion, and I would, for items 1, 2, and 3, but number four is specifically sponsored by Commissioner O'Malley. Commissioner O'Malley, would you like to speak to item four? Approve Financial Resolution appropriate from the General Fund, fund balance for acquisitions of properties 517 Drive Southeast and 521 Cardenas Southeast, in the amount of $440,000. Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lisa, did you want to just introduce this item and just talk a little bit about it?
Yeah.
I think you had had some
Yeah, yes, I would, Commissioner, very much. Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Lisa Cityo White, Deputy County Manager for General Services. This particular agenda item, motion is to authorize the County Manager to execute a purchase agreement for the acquisition of 517 Cardenas, in the amount of $165,000. And second property is, second motion is to authorize the County Manager to execute a purchase agreement for the acquisition of 521 Cardenas Southeast, in the amount of $115,500 plus closing costs. The third motion, authorize the County Manager to execute subsequent amendments and all documentation necessary to perfect the title and the above proposed property acquisitions. Little history, the two properties are both located in the southeast heights. They are located next to each other. 517 Cardenas is a fourplex built in 1955. It is zoned multifamily, high-density. It is approximately 1,379 square feet. The proposed purchase price of $165,000 is within the range of properties sold within the last six months in that area, which range anywhere from $131,000 to $249,000. The second property is a single-family home, and it is also located, City of Albuquerque, and it's zoned residential multifamily. and it is also located, City Bob Crook, and it's zoned residential multifamily, high density. This particular property is about 1,100 square feet. comps for this particular type of home in the last six months sold anywhere from 55,000 to 194,000. So the proposed purchase price of 115 as well within range. As dated, the two properties are adjacent to each other and combined parcel is about 0.32 acres plus or minus. They are centrally located within walking distance of the Burnley County Care Facility, the future home of the Tiny Home Village. Medical facilities, community addiction service providers, such as, there's a particular nonprofit organization that provides single occupancy, transitional housing for people experiencing homelessness as a result of substance abuse. In addition, they're centrally located near other amenities such as public transportation and shopping. The intended use of the proposed properties allows Burnley County to expand their ability to provide more transitional and permanent housing for those individuals who are experiencing homelessness. These, the due diligence efforts have begun. Environmental studies, remediation, surveys, and of course, title work to ensure that the we have a clear title for the two properties. At this time, I stand for questions.
Mr. Chair, just to give a little bit of history, you know, we are looking for as part of our continuum of, you know, housing, the housing continuum in terms of folks coming from situations in the street to shelters to traditional housing to permanently housing, this fits right in there. We are going to, of course, need more housing on the other end, which is people need to be able to go somewhere either transitionally or or through permanently affordable housing. And this, this is an opportunity here, it's zoned so that it can be denser. If the properties do need to be scraped, there's an opportunity to build more dense units. And it's, as I said, across from another provider. So it makes sense for this area to to look at. I think our ability to provide more housing for this population. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley.
And I would move approval if no.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. Thank you, Lisa. Are there any other questions before we get a second? Okay, Commissioner O'Malley has motioned. I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover County Clerk, Commissioner Colley.
Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Commissioner Piscotti.
Aye.
Chairman Talbert.
Aye.
So called, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion 8B passes unanimously. Thank you both very much. Now to item 8C, which was pulled off the consent agenda. Behavioral Health Single Site Multifamily Project. We need an FR number, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover County Clerk, FR 2020-42.
Thank you very much. I think this is Commissioner, Commissioner O'Malley pulled this off. If you'd like to give a preamble and then we can.
Okay.
Talk to, I think, Margarita or Chief Perez. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I I just wanted to talk a little bit about, I mean, I understand the history of this allocation. The idea, of course, was to provide another project similar to Hope Works that's downtown and to utilize some vouchers that have been out there for some time for veterans to serve a population that is obviously in great need. I just want to make sure that there's a process in place where when we go forward to property acquisition, just like with other other projects we have, that it comes before the Housing Board for approval and that as that moves forward along the way. Because at this point, I think that there is, I know that the director Betty has been working on it. She said she's identified a piece of property, she's identified a developer, et cetera. And this kind of funding that goes into that, into the housing nonprofit has a lot of flexibility. And and that was the idea to allow things to happen fairly quickly. But I think for this amount of money, a better understanding of the population that is going to serve it as we move forward, that it goes through a process where we are updated and there's approval process along the way. And I guess that's what's going to be very important in the county manager. If that's your understanding, that would be good.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley. I'll start with County Manager Baca. Then we can hear from Deputy County Manager Perez and Director Chavez if she's on. So Julie?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so I'm I'm, I agree with you, Commissioner O'Malley. And I know that Margarita is here to, is present to kind of explain how this all is working. But but I do agree that, you know, we need to be really organized and we need to be thorough in what we're doing. And so so I'm going to just go ahead and hand it over to Margarita. But I but I agree with you, Commissioner O'Malley.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie. Margarita?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, for for identifying that that request. This particular agenda item is purely moving the funding from the Behavioral Health Department to the county housing nonprofit in order to really begin that process. I think there is absolutely an opportunity and a venue, both through the county commission, through the subcommittees, and through the Housing Board to update you all on that process as it continues. I think there's absolutely no problem with us continuing to make sure that we're following the appropriate vetting and approval processes. Again, we're just trying to move those dollars over in order to continue to make progress on the project. As you know, we absolutely want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to serve the this very vulnerable population, particularly those who have a high behavioral health need and are needing onsite services and veterans with also, who are also experiencing serious mental illness or high mental health needs and are homeless or precariously housed. So again, we're working to serve this very vulnerable population. It's an opportunity for us to work closely with the housing nonprofit to 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 continue to move that process forward.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Margarita. And I understand, I think, and I I appreciate, you know, keeping keeping us moving forward, that we approved this, I think, back in February of 2019 in terms of the overall scope of the project. We now are getting to come to fruition, actually get the money moved, as Commissioner O'Malley talked, as well as you, over to Betty, to be able to move forward with this type of project, which, as we've talked about numerous times, that Behavioral Health Initiative is now really gaining a lot of traction. And I commend this commission for working closely with Margarita and Chief Perez to move us forward in a way that gets these dollars allocated and gets them into the most vulnerable populations. I do agree with you, Commissioner O'Malley, that we always want to have fiscal responsibility, make sure we're all on the same page in that regard. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. With that, having heard Margarita, Commissioner O'Malley, I would make a motion that we approve financial resolution of our 2020-42, budgeting this movement of money over to Betty Valdez and the housing, housing group that she runs, with the caveat, obviously, that we always, 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 that's a double, that we always move forward. Oh, Commissioner Casada?
I second that.
Oh, thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Piscotti.
Thank you. It sounds like, Margarita, that this did go through many layers of vetting and approval. And so to Commissioner O'Malley's point, what's the best way to know? What's the best way to be, have transparency around what's going on in the process?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Piscotti, I think there are multiple avenues. I think we absolutely owe it to our Behavioral Health Subcommittee to continue to update them on progress. I think we also have the obligation to continue to bring this information forward to the Housing Nonprofit Board through their process. And I think we absolutely can continue to update the commission as we progress forward.
Great.
That's great. Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Madam Clerk, if you would give a roll call, please.
Mr. Chairman, Linda Stover County Clerk, Commissioner Colley.
Colley, aye.
Commissioner Casada.
Aye.
Commissioner O'Malley.
You're on mute.
Commissioner Piscotti.
Aye.
Chairman Talbert.
Yeah.
So called. Thank you, Commissioner.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. Motion carries unanimously, approved. And oh, my gosh, it's 5:52. I don't know if the rest of you are watching this, but it is item number nine, which is announcement of the next commission meeting. Okay, Tuesday, April 28, 2020 at 5:00 PM, Zoom video. So we're going to do this again, same bat time, same bat channel. But thank you all. This went off great. I don't, I hope Paul feels the same way, but thank you. Excellent. Possibly close to another record, but I'm not going to speak too fast yet. Thank you all. We can't sign any documents, but we will sign them virtually and we will get them done. With that.
Congratulations, everyone. Well done.
Yes, I call this meeting adjourned.